All right, good evening, everyone. It is now 6:30. This is July 22, 2015. We're starting our regular city council meeting. Can we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Please remain standing as Chaplain Del Burke comes and gives the invocation.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come tonight. We thank you for the blessed city that we live in in Bastrop. Lord, we thank you that you're tonight, that you guide and direct each council member here, the mayor, and each person involved with the city government here tonight, that there would be peace upon this meeting, wisdom, and discernment for all the decisions made here. Lord, we thank you. We have a growing city, many decisions to be made, but we thank you when we can come together and unity, that we will see these things come together by following your path. We thank you for it, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Chaplain Burke. All right, we're on to agenda item for a mayor's report. All right, so had a pretty fun couple of weeks. We can go an interesting couple of weeks. I'll briefly speak on it because I'm sure Councilman Lowe has a little bit more to say about it, but Wednesday, the 7th, we held a city hall meeting for the African-American Cultural District, and we had a large number of citizens show up to participate, and I'm really excited about the direction that that's going to be going. Let's see, July 10th, I attended the Dell Webb groundbreaking ribbon ceremony, ribbon cutting ceremony. If you don't know what that is, that is a senior living community that will be housed at the back of the new portion of the colony off of 969. We had the Dog Park event on July 15th. A lot of citizens came out for that, a lot of input. I'm sure we'll hear more about it. Last week also, being a new reinstated government official or city official, I had to go to TML. So I did that last week. It was very interesting. I learned some things, and also there was things that I was pretty familiar with, just learning as I've been going for the last couple of years. So it was nice to see that I've been able to retain those things. Saturday, we had the Corvette Invasion. Many of you know what that is. It's a huge event for Bastrop. Coincidentally, coming back in town, I was able to fall in line behind six Corvettes headed this way. And so it was a real nice event, well put together, lots and lots of Corvettes. I had the opportunity to do the mayor's pick for Corvette, so the car I chose was a '62 C1 Corvette. It was candy red, had chrome on it, and had a drop top. Man, that thing was beautiful, let me tell you, let me tell you. It was a hard choice between that one and the, it was a newer model black Corvette. It reminded me of the Batmobile, but I went with the '62. Then later on that day, we had the firemen versus police water battle, and if y'all didn't get to go there, y'all missed out on a fun time, just about that time the sun had kicked out, so it was perfect for the water. And for whatever reason, I found myself the target of a lot of kids, but I had a blast. I had a blast. And then I followed up that on Saturday with going to, tomorrow, if you don't know, there's a citizen here, her name is Ms. Aura B. Moore. Tomorrow, she'll turn 94 years old. Saturday, I went to celebrate her birthday with her, with her family, and it was a great time, so thank y'all for the invite, and I can't wait to wish her a happy birthday tomorrow. So that's my mayor's report. Thank you. Now we're on to the council members' report. We'll go from Councilmember Lowe. Brother Lowe. Good afternoon, everybody, or evening, everybody. It's good to see everybody. I was blessed to be a part of getting the African-American Cultural District together. We had a good time, a good meeting, and I just want y'all to stay tuned for details. There'll be more things coming out soon when we get together again, and then we will move further than that. It's a good time, and we look forward to seeing y'all again.
July 30th. July 30th.
I'm sorry?
July 30th.
July 30th, okay, there we go. So July 30th, it's out there, so it'll be right here. Over the past couple of weeks, I've had the honor of participating in several events. TML, as Mayor Harris outlined, real informative, got some deeper understanding of things in municipalities and municipal leadership. We came back and we went to the Bastrop, I mean, the Corvette Invasion, and my pick was the smooth, light blue '57 Corvette. It's owned by Slade Ellis in San Antonio. Looked that thing up. It's really beautiful. Looked like me. Amen. I also had a blast at the Third Annual Water Battle, celebrating with families and council members of Beat the Heat. That was really nice to do, so we thank all that came out to make it a success, and that's definitely what a community looks like. Looking ahead, next week is Homecoming, which is always a special time in Bastrop, and I'm truly honored to share that I will be inducted into the Bastrop Athletics Hall of Fame during Homecoming Weekend, and that's going to be a really cool moment and a cherry on top of my life. Lastly, I encourage everyone to get involved. Many of our city's boards and commissions have vacancies. Just want to let you know, your voice matters, and please get involved and take care of that. That's my report. Thank you. Councilmember Meyer?
Okay, here we go. So the Corvette Invasion was great, as they've said. So of course, I have to tell you my Corvette that I picked. First, I had a '69 red convertible, but then when I saw the 2022 Black Widow Corvette, my motto was "Under the Hood" because it said, "Lions don't chase rats." And I'm like, man, could there be a better saying than that? Lions, I want us to put that up here, all around City Hall. That'd be really cool. So that was amazing, the Corvette show, and probably the best I've ever attended here. It just gets better every year, so thank you, Sean, for doing all of that. Also, I just want to talk about a couple of businesses here in Bastrop. They raised so much money for the flood victims in central Texas and Kerr County because they have given 100% of their net profits for the flood victims to organizations. So I'm going to shout out to P. Terries through all of their locations, $150,000. But I'm going to really shout out to El Nuevo, our hometown, El Nuevo here. They do have one in Austin and Georgetown, $20,000. 100%, 100% of their profits went to that, so kudos to them for that. So those are the things that, from the past two weeks, but I want to remind y'all that this Saturday is, of course, the ribbon cutting for the restoration of our Old Iron Bridge, and that's at 10:00 a.m. in the morning. And then after that, you can just walk on down to the Museum and Visitor Center because at 11:00, they're going to have the National Day of the Cowboy. So there are going to be demonstrations and stories and a lot of fun things to do, and that's from 11:00 to 3:00. So that's this coming Saturday, but as Councilmember Lowe pointed out, we've got the big event of the year coming up, and that's the Bastrop Homecoming and Rodeo. This is the 78th Annual, July 29th, August 2nd, Mayfest Park, up on the hill. If you don't know what the hill is, it's up on the hill at Mayfest Park. Councilmember Lowe touched us a little bit about this Bastrop Sports Hall of Fame, but I'm going to expand a little bit more on him because I knew he was going to talk about himself, so I'm going to tell you a little bit more, just a tiny bit about Councilmember Lowe. This is just a little sample. He was an outstanding athlete, and now I have to read my notes because there were so many things to say about him. I've got to put my glasses on and tell you a little more about him. So August 2nd, the Performing Arts Center, 11 o'clock, we will have the BHS Sports Hall of Fame, where the outstanding athletes are honored and inducted. Councilmember Lowe was the 1989 quarterback of the Bastrop High School team in football, and they won district. They ranked 15th in the state. He also ran track and was district and regional high jump champion, qualified for state, and finished eighth in the state with a jump of 6 feet 10 inches. After that, he went to college, played football, ran track. Then he went to Houston-Tillisum College, which also his daughter goes to now, Perry, which is really cool. And he had a personal best jump of 7 feet 2 inches, and he ranked eighth in the nation. So that's just a little bit about this outstanding council member to my right here. So thank you, Councilmember Lowe.
Thank you, Councilmember Meyer. Council Premier Pro Tim Kirkland?
Has anyone mentioned Corvette Invasion yet? I was just curious. Yeah, we had 360 Corvettes invade our town of Bastrop. The Oscar Mayer Wiener Mobile joined them, and a very large drivable shopping cart, the size of a small house, joined them. I chose a 2019 ZR1 from a gentleman who lives in Ed Couch, Texas. I can barely say that without saying Elsa afterwards, because, but I also have a 1963 Corvette that was in the show, and I received a First Choice Award and a Club's Choice Award. So the Rear Grand Valley Corvette Association chose mine as their favorite car in the show, so that was pretty cool. Saturday evening, we had the reveal, the season reveal for the Opera House, and so the Opera House goes through and tells us all of the plays that they're going to have for the next year, and there's a great lineup that they have planned. It's absolutely one of the assets that makes Bastrop awesome, and it was a very full day on Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland. Councilmember Plunkett?
Whatever his name is.
Whatever his name, well, I just, as I was about to say your name, I thought about the picture that they captured of you having a good time Saturday, so.
Uh-oh. I don't think I've seen that one. Probably best I don't. Well, since we're all giving our, let me look real quick. I picked a '64 Stingray that was turquoise and white, out of Dallas, Esther Sunny Aguirre, I believe is how you pronounce his name, but I probably butchered that. And yeah, I did a lot of the same stuff that all my fellow councilmembers did, and really enjoyed the weekend, and just wanted to wish a happy birthday to my beautiful wife, Angela. It's tonight, so.
I was going to say.
If anybody's got her cell phone number, text her right now.
Thank you. We'll try to get you out of here. Councilmember Fossler?
Hi, Bastrop. It's been a busy two weeks, as you've heard. I'll hit just a few highlights. The community bike ride was super fun, the Bark Park meeting, all bark, no bite. It was very, very congenial, very good. I went to my first CapCog Executive Meeting in Austin, which is the Capital Area Council of Government, so it's from central Texas. It's all the, well, representatives from different mayors and commissioners and council members from all across central Texas talking about regional issues. That was super interesting. We talked a lot about 911 services and emergency services. I also attended a regional air quality plan workshop. As you know, we have some sensors here at Mayfest Park, so I'll be getting with, they are particulate 2.5 sensors, continuous. I'll learn more about them, but we have some sensors in Mayfest Park and the whole region, the whole idea is to work together to not be a non-attainment zone. So that is what we're working towards as a region, so I'll be reporting back about that. Yes, we went to the volunteer fair, and we had all of our community partners and nonprofits join us, and also, so they always bring energy. Corvettes, okay. I chose the 2021 Stingray that was chrome wrapped. Shane McMillan from San Antonio, it was dedicated to his late wife, Rosa, and it was pretty incredible. And the fire and police water battle, I sat safely on the bleachers. I don't even know if y'all knew I was there. I did not get wet. I took pictures of y'all, I did not get wet. Also, I attended the CASA fundraiser this weekend, and also for the, it was a fundraiser for the Smithville Chamber of Commerce as well. The Great Casino, that was super fun, and I learned how to play craps. And then yesterday, I went to Narcan Training. All the Bastrop County employees were there, there were some from Bastrop as well. That's for opioid overdose, and y'all, this is all it takes right here. It's a nasal spray, and it's inert, so you can carry it around with you. It doesn't have any effect except on opioids, but it saves lives, and I think we should get trained on it. Do you all have one on your desk? It's very important. Anyway, I can train you. And let's see, last night, went to Chalk the Walk at Minerva Delgado Park, and then tomorrow, this is what's coming up, tomorrow, at Neighbors Kitchen and Yard, they're doing a fundraiser for Kerr Flood, Kerr County Flood Relief. There is a whole lineup of musicians that starts at 6:00 at Neighbors. Thank you, Casey, for organizing that. Then later, next week, we're doing Art in the Park and a community swim, a pool party at the State Park to finish off National Parks and Recreation Month for July. That's all I got. Thanks, y'all.
Thank you, Councilmember Fossler. Before I go to the city manager's report, I just really want to say thank you to the councilmembers for showing up and being involved in all the events. It shows a lot to our community. We were there in full force at the water battle, and Carrie didn't want to get wet, but Kevin was, Councilmember Plunkett was over there having a good time, y'all. I mean, we all were, and so I just really want to thank y'all for coming together and showing the community what we can do together. And just one other thing, Councilmember Meyer left off, but I don't think she was aware, so Councilmember Lowe also qualified for the Junior Olympics when he was 18 years old, all right? So he's a humble guy, so he's not going to say all of that, but that's a little bit on that. And yes, to elaborate on this coming up Saturday is the National Day of the Cowboy. I'll be there with my cowboy friends. We'll be giving roping lessons and doing a few other things. And yes, please make sure that if you have time, there's a lot of events coming up next week for the Homecoming Weekend. It's a big tradition here in Bastrop, and I hope to see everyone there. So thank you. It's also my 25-year classroom union. All right, city manager's report?
Well, so they got to tell you about all the fun stuff. I'm going to tell you about the work we're doing. So this is really a reminder to you and the residents out there that we will have a special budget meeting on Monday, July 28th. That is the day the budget is due to the city secretary. So the agenda will be posted, but the first time you'll see it will be that. We have several budget meetings after that. They fall during council meeting days, so really, these are the two out-of-sequence days that are outside that normal, that normal rotation. So tonight, there was a young man that was named Callahan Russo, who should have been here tonight, but he is actually in Loretta Lynn's Ranch in Tennessee. Little seven-year-old Callahan was one of 40 people who was invited to attend. Callahan is a local. He trains in Bastrop County, and he trains at Dirt Lab Coaching, Cody Haverfield, who used to be Dirt Lab Coaching, that's now River Oaks Motocross Park off of 304 and Waterson. Mr. Callahan, for Mr. Callahan, we had a proclamation, but we're going to save that to give that to him directly. Hopefully, he can be here at the next council meeting and can tell us about how awesome his event was and if he brought home any trophies. Anybody who's interested, there is his Instagram post. So updates on projects. The wastewater plant expansion, we have kicked off. We are doing biweekly meetings. We've had design charrettes. We're discussing permit expansion of our existing plant, and we're in budget development. So I know you can't really read that Gantt chart, but it's got a deliverable date of 2027, so that date is quickly upon us. Water wells up and running, still waiting on some final parts, but they are operational. We've not had any additional hiccups, so thank you, Curtis and team. Streets, this is the one everybody's been waiting on. In my hot little hands, I have 60% design for Water Linden and Farm. It has come in significantly below budget for the sections that we planned, and so what we are going to try to do, those are the sections, what we're going to try to do is we've got some pipe bursting. There are some water lines and wastewater lines along 71 that need to get repaired. We are doing an alt add with that contractor to move them to the other side of water and some of those other streets that need infrastructure repair. We're going to do that via pipe bursting, so if I can get those things lined up, lined up, we'll only have mobilization one time, and we've got enough funds to go ahead and do all of Water Farm and Linden that were required. So the goal is to have those completed by the end of the year. I'm waiting for the applause because y'all keep, y'all keep asking.
Hold on, I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Like, I'll applaud for that, for the people who've been wanting that. But I do know there, those are our larger streets that we're going to take care of. I know there are citizens who are concerned with smaller streets. Is there a way that we can provide a list, a priority list, or wherever, what we're going to have taken care of, and like a timeline on those smaller streets?
Yes, we'll update our website. We are on the hunt for a new street, Streets and Drainage Director, and so Curtis Hancock has stepped over and is helping, so we are in some coordination pieces right now, but we're going to get that updated and out to the folks.
Okay. Councilmember Fossler?
Thank you, Sylvia. I have two questions, please. One, you just said all of water. Did you mean the area on the map still, or went all, all the way up?
So this area on the map is what we have design and estimates for. We have, the rest of this portion of Water Street has water lines and sewer lines and manholes that need to be corrected, and so as part of the pipe bursting program, if I can go ahead and get those done, then we have enough money in the budget to go ahead and do that. We're asking the engineer for an alt add to that so that we can just go ahead and take off as soon as the pipe bursting is complete.
Okay, thank you. My other question is, even though we've explained it a few times, will you please tell the public what kind of streets are eligible for the HA5, how those decisions are made, and which ones are not eligible?
Okay, thank you for that.
Yes.
Because I've heard, I've heard an earful this week. So streets are broken down into three areas. We have those for what are called preventive maintenance streets, the streets that are within five years old that we have to crack seal and do not show any major signs of deterioration. Those are HA5 eligible streets. We have those that are street repair, that may require a little bit of infill, some potholes and things, but structurally are okay and need a, what we call a Millen overlay. And then we have those streets like Water Linden and Farm sections that are complete reconstructions. Those, when we did the borings of some of these, those have very little to any base. So could I have done it sooner? Sure, but we would have been doing it again in seven years because it would have crumbled, so I'd want to do it right the first time, but those are the three categories. And we have four different pots of money to do that. So we have the sales tax, the EDC sales tax, that is three-eighths of a cent. That's about $3.2 million, and that is for existing streets. That is a sales tax that is paid by folks who are shopping that can come in to repair existing streets, so yay for the residents. The next, this group of streets is being paid with capital improvement funds. The city borrowed money a couple of years ago to get these streets done, so we're going to get them done. So those are capital funds. Then we have what are just normal general funds allocated to the particular streets, and then we have other streets that are project-based, right? So things that are part of a development project are those kinds of things that are going to get done. Those get paid with street impact fees. So the streets have a lot of attention. I know it feels like we're only working on the preventive maintenance stuff and we're ignoring all the others. We're not. It just takes us a little bit of time to review it and engineer it to make sure that when we go repair that street, I don't have to touch it again for the life of the street other than it then moves into a preventive maintenance scheme.
Thank you for that recap. That was very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Meyer?
Thank you, Mayor. Sylvia, I'm thinking Water Linden Pine, I mean, Farm, excuse me, that's such a monumental thing. I'm thinking maybe Lucy and Edward Fawkes that live on Water Street, we could do a ribbon cutting, you know, for all of this.
We may need a ribbon cutting. And this doesn't include, there's another group of streets, Councilmember Fossler, that I left off. The county is now participating with us, as is WCID2. So in Tahitian Village, some of those streets are WCID2, and those residents, City of Bastrop residents, were paying a street tax. We have since went in and improved those streets and have begun to take those off, so hopefully for those residents in WCID2, that street tax is going to go away. So they'll actually have a reduction. Now, there are streets like in Piney Ridge, Laura Hoffman, those kinds of things, that we're working with Commissioner Beckett to get those done, and then there are streets like Buttonwood and a couple of others, Internal to Town Pine, that we're working with Commissioner Carmack to get that done. That saves us a whole heck of a lot of money because we just pay for the material and the county does the labor. So we're trying to stretch every dollar till it's finished.
So with Commissioner Carmack and his crew doing the larger streets, would that allow us to do the smaller streets?
Yes.
During that time? Okay.
And he doesn't want to touch any streets that have manholes or things either. They just want, they just want to blow them go.
All right, thank you.
Okay, no, I'm not touching.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know. I'm just saying, I'm saying thank you to the street report. I know you still have, you have more to do, but like, that's worthy of a thank you.
Yes. Continue with our park planning. As somebody mentioned, we had the Bark Park meeting. We have those results up on the web. We'll go through, on the 28th, when we go through the budget, we'll also go through our capital improvement plan workshop. It's the excess dollars from the bridge borrow that we're programming back into streets and making some determinations, how we're going to proceed in some of those park areas. The budget is in process. This is a, this is going to be a brand-new budget for this city. We are doing it in Open Gov. You will have a paper copy, but the residents will have a completely digital version that they can dive into. One of the beginning pages of this book is how do you even use this book? So we've, we're breaking it down in a very KISS principle. We're putting a budget at a glance that tells people how much we had in the bank at fund balance, how much we expect to receive revenues, what we expect to spend, those kinds of things so that you can have an idea of what's going to be in the bank at the end of the year. And we're also giving you pro formas, year over year, where do you expect the funds to be in five years if everything remains equal or given some simple assumptions? So I'm super excited about that, but y'all know I'm a number nerd. Coming up downtown, we have a lemonade crawl on Friday. Registration closes tomorrow. My Caleb will kill me if I don't say that again. Registration closes tomorrow, so please save yourself a cup. Some of those lemonades are going to be spiked, so Friday night, I'll see you downtown. Also, on Saturday, oh, that should say 10:00 a.m., Rick or Colin, if you, if you guys can fix that, that should say 10:00 a.m., we have the Old Iron Bridge ribbon cutting, and I know Mr. Kestles gets really mad when we call it the Old Iron Bridge, but I don't know another name to call it because that's what everybody's always called it here. We did have some commemorative pins made for that ribbon cutting, and then Jeremiah's Italian Ice will have some Italian ice and ice cream sandwiches. Then this week, we, or on the 30th, we have Sit with Sill here, 7:30 in the morning. It is a deviation from the evening that we, I just ran out of days in the week that I could do anything, so it's a morning edition. And then you'll see a strange face around City Hall, around the 4th and the 5th. I am part of the Texas Women's Leadership Program, and so I have a young woman who's going to shadow me, and so she'll be here on the 4th and the 5th. She is the HR Director for the City of Pleasanton, which is a little city between San Antonio, Bernie area. There you go. That's just the tip of the iceberg.
All right. Thank you for that fantastic report. We on Agenda Item 5? Do we have anything?
No.
All right. So Staff and Board reports, Agenda Item 6, Receiver Presentation on the Un-audited Monthly Financial Report for the period ending in June 2025. Ms. Laura. Which I got to sit with their group this week, and it was, it was pretty fun, so.
We put the fun in finance.
Look, hey, I appreciate you catching that alley-oop that I threw to you, because that's what y'all told me last week, so thank you.
We, we try to be fun. Okay, sorry, guys, good evening. And highlights of the un-audited financial report. All funds have a positive bottom line with revenue exceeding forecast by 9%, as well as expenses coming under forecast by 27%. I'm going to jump around, I'm sorry. Sales tax is less than forecast by 3.6%. That equates to approximately 240K deficit in the general fund. Property tax is proceeding forecast by 3.74% or 205K. Impact fees, revenue is above forecast for the fifth consecutive month. Impact fees is exceeding revenues by 20%. I'm going to jump back a little bit. Water wastewater revenue is exceeding forecast by 218,000 or 3.9%, while their expenditures are under forecast, and they're running 95.7 comparable to forecast in the water wastewater fund. BP&L revenue is currently exceeding forecast by 14,000, while their expenditures are under forecast by 3%. Hot fund revenue is exceeding forecast by 15% or 417K, while their expenditures are running 94.7% to forecast. Finally, we have Development Service Fund, where their revenue is exceeding forecast by 20% or 287,000, while their expenditures are running 96.9 to forecast. The only fund that is exceeding forecast in expenditures is the BURF Fund, that is specific to large vehicle purchases. Go ahead in trying to get those purchased before the end of the fiscal year, while the forecast, of course, projects expenditures over time. I also want to point out, I gave you a handout that updated legal fees by council for the month of June. That was the last page of the presentation in the packet, but I gave you an updated handout. And I also received a question in regards to travel and training, so I wanted to share that information with the group. This travel and training is reported for FY '26. These numbers will renew with the new budget come October 1. If expenditures are accrued on a credit card, there is generally a delay in getting those posted. That's typically because of the credit card cycle, right? We get it, we get it charged, we get it posted, so there's usually a delay. But other than that, any of your travel-related expenditures will be charged in the month that they're occurred. Do y'all have any questions for me?
Doesn't look like it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're on to citizen comments. I believe we just received one more, so that gives us two, correct? Or we have more than the three now, all right. Thank you, thank you, Michael. All right, so the first citizen comment that we have is from Pamela Veer, and she wishes to speak, and she also has a one-minute video, correct? Okay. All right, Ms. Veer, can you please come up here, state your name again and your address? Do they have a copy of the video for you to play?
Yes.
Yes, all right, awesome. I guess you'll cue him in when you're ready.
Not yet.
Not yet, not yet.
Pam Veer, 402 Oak Street, thank you, City Council, thank you, Mayor, thank you, City Manager, City Secretary.
You have three minutes, just three minutes, okay. I didn't, I didn't, no, no, I'm sorry, time don't start now, but I just wanted to make sure I threw that out there.
Okay, ready, set, go. I'm here to speak on behalf of our future recreation center and year-round swimming pool. I, the last time I was here was about a year and a half ago to speak on this subject, and I've been to many Sit with Silvias, and I'm waiting to see about the procurement of land and the development of a future, really good recreation center for our city. I have a video of something that I dream about. It's from Durango, Colorado. It's only a minute. It doesn't show the upstairs, but there's a major workout room with a great facility. And I was camping near there and needed a shower, because we didn't have the facilities camping, and I was asked to pay $6, I was given a towel, I took three showers while I was in there, sorry about the water waste, but I needed it. And the people were lovely, the front desk, I'm assuming, were volunteers, rather than people that were getting paid, but it seemed that everyone else there was getting paid very well to run this facility. And I'm wondering, if you build something like that, I know it's a lot of money, and I know we don't have a lot of money, but the hotel motel tax, if that, if we could get grants or whatever, if we need to get petitions started from the community, can we put this as a priority on our agenda to get this moving? Because we have one woman that just turned 81, and another one that works out regularly, who's 90, and I would like very much to get this done for them before time is up. So is there, I, I know I can't ask questions and get answers, but we really need this, because the facility we have, I'm very grateful for, very, very grateful for, but I'm going to use a bad word, it's called rinky-dink. It's really rinky-dink, and we need so much more for the citizens that are here now, the older people that are paying taxes, and my time is up, and please, let's make this a priority, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I can respond to you about a factual piece. So this will be one of the topics we discuss on Monday, as part of the budget workshop. That particular, that particular amenity cost $15.4 million to build back in 2002. Adjusted for inflation, that same amenity today is about $27.5 million. To put that into perspective, in the general fund, that's $1.30.
Increase. All right, thank you for, for being so fast with the info.
There, there are multiple avenues to explore, and we're going to talk about some of that on Monday.
All right, thank you. All right, up next, we have Ms. Rita Ward.
Do you want me to say my name and address, since you don't know me?
We know you, but it might be someone new here or listening that does not know you, so, you know.
Okay, I'm Bastrop's old lady, I'm 94 years old. Anyway, I heard through the grapevine that there was people here that we wanted to put, you know, you want to put up a cell tower. And I have a friend that's worked on cell towers, and he just retired at 66 last year, and I was talking to him, because they were talking about the radiation, and he told me all about it. And I said, why don't, why don't you come here and talk? He said, no, I'll tell you what to say. So I'll try to remember what he said. Number one, the cell tower does not radiate down, it radiates out. And if it had over 25 watts, or whatever it is, and they were climbing up there to work on that, they could get fried, you know? And so anyway, all of our cell towers need to be really working, and he said that AT&amp;T was good in the country, you know, out from town, Verizon is good in towns, and then there's T-Mobile. And we need good cell towers, because my kids were caught up in the flood, and no cell tower, no communication, and I was about to pull my hair and scream. And then another thing I found out, is that I talked to Taylor, and Samsung is, is going to recycle their water, they're working with Taylor like that. So why can't we get the businesses here, and the new developers that's coming in, to work with the city to set up a recycling plant? That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Ms. Ward, I appreciate it, as always. All right, next we have Carlos Liriano. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Council.
Tonight...
Can you introduce yourself to us, please, in three minutes, no worries.
Carlos Liriano, I own Lost Pines Toyota, at 806 Highway 71, I also live in town at 1208 Church. Tonight, in your consent agenda, you are going to take up the issue of the Hunter's Crossing pit. I have had a, about a 13, 14-year battle with the pit. My store, Lost Pines Toyota, I have paid over $1.5 million to the pit, in addition to my existing property taxes. I don't see where I have gotten that value back. I also own the 38 acres next to me, to the west of Lost Pines Toyota. When this pit was built, they made a deal with Home Depot, and the Home Depot pays about $15,000 a year, even though they have probably two-thirds of my, the size of my property. And I pay one point, I, I, over these years, I've paid $1.5 million. This property that I have next to me now, 38 acres, has some building restrictions, and I just want to read this to you, just if you, if you bear with me. The property should not be used leased or occupied for the purpose or in connection with a home improvement store, or a garden center, department store, consumer electronics store, sporting goods, general merchandising discount stores such as Walmart, Target, Kmart, or a membership warehouse club such as Costco, Sam's Club, offering merchandise, mixed-use, you know, bed, bath, and beyond, and what have you. Those are the restrictions that this 38 acres, the prime piece of real estate in Bastrop, has on it right now. When I purchased the property, I purchased the property, the main reason I purchased the property was because they were going to put apartment, apartment complex right next to my store, and I did not believe that that was the best use for that, for that property. So I purchased the property, and I deal with these restrictions as developers are coming in town, trying to bring one of these stores in. So tonight, I ask you to, please, do not vote to continue the pit, take this subject, discuss it, and vote this pit down. This pit needs to be eliminated for many reasons, and I ask you, are these restrictions the best for Bastrop? I believe it's not, and I will appreciate your consideration, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have one more citizen signed up, and that's Cecilia Serna. Good evening, can you please state your name and location, and you have three minutes.
Cecilia Serna, 1104 Hill Street. I am up here in opposed to the Ledwell agreement, only because the amount of money involved, I think, even for a city, it seems small. However, that retreat was only less than a month ago, and I don't think it's prudent to go into an agreement without actually seeing the benefits, or seeing if it's actually been effective for you. I think it's a bit premature. The proposal was submitted May the 12th. The retreat happened June the 12th. Today, July the 22nd, we are now seeking approval for this agreement, so it seems to me, since the retreat already happened, did we enter into a contract already with Ledwell? Now, it states that this leadership academy is perfect for 10 to 50 people, are we maximizing that, and I hope we are? I think it's vital that not just leadership attends and benefits from this, I think all city staff should, and coming from being a trainer, I think it's immensely important, don't take that wrong, because I'm opposed to this, training can never be enough, but I saw that this is for council and executive staff, and I wish that it would be considered that this goes to all city staff, because I feel truly everyone can benefit. Part of this agreement, and the proposal that Ledwell offered, was a toolkit with 65 items, so I'm also asking, and I can't answer, my concern is, were any of these items offered in this toolkit in the retreat that you already went to? There's resources, articles, case studies, a lot of these, I'm wondering if you went away with this retreat with something. The amount of money that was listed was $45,000, and I believe according to the proposal, that's exclusive of the 6,000, so that amount of money is actually more than I think most people realize. Again, I'm for training, I just hope that we wait on this agreement, make sure it's working for y'all, it's the right thing, and that you consider maximizing the amount of people that can benefit from this.
Thank you, Ms. Serna. All right, if we have no other citizen comments, we will move to consent agenda items. Councilmembers, do we have any items that you would like to pull? Councilmember Meyer?
Yes, please, I would like to pull 8E.
Okay, anyone else?
8C and 8H, please.
All right, is that it? 8C, okay, all right, so, do you have that, Michael? Did we pull those, okay, all right, so we are... All right, so we've removed agenda items from right now, 8C, 8E, and 8H, right, yes. All right, so, eight, the following may be acted upon in one motion. A council member or citizen may request items removed on consent agenda for individual consideration. Agenda item 8A, consider an act on a second reading ordinance of number 2025-60, amending two five dash six zero, amending the code of ordinances, chapter twelve, titled Traffic and Vehicle, Article twelve point zero three point zero zero four, titled Installation, amended to read as described and attached heretofore as exhibit A. Agenda item eight B, consider an act on a second reading of ordinance number two zero two five dash five nine, amending the code of ordinances related to chapter twelve, titled Traffic and Vehicles, Article twelve point zero five point zero zero six, titled SH twenty-one, frontage, road speed limits, amending the location of speed on South Highway twenty-one in the city limits of the city of Bastrop, repealing all prior ordinances that are in conflict herewith. Move to approve. Second. We have a motion and a second. Did you catch who it was? Councilmember Plunkett was the motion, and Mayor Proton Kirkland was the second. Okay. All right. Agenda item eight C. Oh, we got a vote, sorry. Thank you. Moving a little fast. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, can you show that the motion passes unanimous, the vote? All right, okay, now, eight C. Oh, yeah. Thank you. Consider an act on the second reading of the ordinance number two zero two five six two, approving the fiscal year two thousand twenty-six annual service plan update, including provisions related to assessments for Hunter's Crossing Public Improvement District, approving fiscal year two thousand twenty-five to two thousand twenty-six assessment, role for the district, and containing other provisions related to the Hunter's Crossing Public Improvement District and the Hunter Crossing Local Government Corporation. Councilmember Plunkett.
Yeah, I don't know if we want to start with Madam City Manager or with City Attorney, but can we go through the process of, because I think this body has multiple times expressed their interest in doing away with this PID? And can we go through the process of that, what that's gonna entail? And then also, I believe the restrictions that Mr. Liriano mentioned are actually deed restrictions. And if that's the case, you know, can just explain to the public, you know, what it is that's gonna be required to deal with those?
I'll start to give a history, and then... Okay, so the council last year did absolutely express interest. So a PID for the benefit of the public is a public improvement district. It is a special assessment on property. The Hunter's Crossing PID was the very first PID in the state, and so it was messy. The legislation had not caught up with how things were supposed to be done. For example, there is a lien that's placed on the property. That was filed at the city secretary's office, not the court of record, as is required now. So sometimes liens would be hard to find, property transfers, ownership, et cetera, et cetera. Pids can have two components. They don't need to, but they can. They can have an operation and maintenance component, and they can also have a capital component. The capital component does exactly what it says it does. It borrows the money to put the infrastructure in place. The city acts, for lack of a better term, as a co-signer essentially, because that money is borrowed on our faith and good credit, knowing that we're going to collect these assessments that are due to pay the debt off. This particular PID, again, very messy, this particular PID also has an operations and maintenance portion of the PID that had a ceiling. Up until my arrival, we were acting as if it was the goal to get to that ceiling, when that is not the case. There are a lot of things in this PID, in the O and M section, that really belonged to the HOA, but instead the property owners are paying it. There's a disproportionate assessment among the residents versus the businesses. That was a court judgment that was ordered after there was a lot of discussion. Additionally, the original developer is still being paid for their portion of the capital assessments, and I believe we pay about three hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars every year. So that's how we got here. The PID also acts as a special, for lack of a better term, again, special zoning that has restrictions on itself on what can be built, et cetera, et cetera, ostensibly because it wanted to protect property values during the development of that PID. So the PID has a board that's governed, that's appointed by this body. That PID reviews assessments, it reviews operational plans, et cetera. It consists of a few property owners and then others that you appoint. Again, up until recently, we've been trying to get to that five million dollar number. We recently, not we, but because before Sylvia, there was a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar fence and some other things that were put in that now this PID is paying debt for in addition to the capital. That is a history. How we either make amendments or do away with the PID, the goal is to pay the O and M section off and get done with that pretty quickly. The capital, well, that's owed, that's got to be paid at some point. Either the property owners in there are gonna pay it, or the city's gonna end up paying it, one of the two. The changes to the PID document will go before the PID board, and I believe will go before a vote for those people in the PID. And I'm gonna go to Charlie and go, you're up.
Can you push your button, Charlie, please? Thank you, sir. In the middle?
There we go. All right. Is this the PID we have separate legal counsel for? Yeah. And so my understanding is you've engaged separate legal counsel to assist with this issue. I have not been in communication with that attorney. I do not know anything about the history of this PID or where we're at, other than what I just learned sitting here right now. And so I'm really not in a position to be able to give any legal guidance off the cuff on this particular matter. Although, what I heard is that debt has been issued?
Debt is issued, yes. And so the reason this is...
It's gonna be problematic.
Yeah, the reason this is before you today is, well, twofold. We've got to get it to the tax assessor collector so that she can do collections. If we miss a deadline, it won't get on her mail-out to collect, which then becomes problematic to us because if I don't have enough money to pay the debt, I've got to, again, it's our faith and good credit, I gotta figure out how to pay the debt, because the debt is still owed. The second part, and I want to make sure everybody fully understands that, is for this year's O and M, we did not increase it. And that really, truly, that is a directive to the board, that we're not going to be doing that. There has been some legal settlement with the HOA on who's going to take what, and you'll hear that at your next executive session. Today, doing away with this PID is not a possibility because there is O and M debt owed, and there is capital debt owed. But I hear you, I hear you, I hear you, and I've had heard you about doing away with it completely. And so the first goal of that is, again, understanding that five million dollars isn't a goal, it's a ceiling.
You know, just as a general matter, not with respect to this specifically, you know, the dissolution of PID is gonna be dependent on the creation documents, and that usually entails paying off of all debt associated with it. And then there's provisions in the code that does allow for a certain number of property owners to file a petition also for dissolution. Of course, you would still have to continue to collect the assessments in order to pay off the debt. So that's just general, that's just general.
So one of the goals for Mr. Liriano and the associated property owners is, number one, begin to address the restrictive covenants, for lack of a better term, the restrictions within the PID itself. That's a motion by the board, that is a vote by the people in the PID that they want to change that. That's, you know...
So do you know, are those deed restrictions, like you have on other pieces of property that are filed with the county? Or are those PID, you know, or is it, could it be changed at the PID level?
It is at the PID level, but it takes a vote of the PID property owners to do it.
Not just the board, but...
So do you have that from legal? Because, I mean, I'm reading through the document right now, and it's a fifty-three year term. It's an encumbrance on the property, and it can only be changed with a hundred percent of the landowners agreeing to it. So that doesn't sound like the PID board can have any say at all.
No, you've got it, the PID board has to vote to put it to a vote, and the property owners have to vote. The property owners within the PID have to vote to...
To change the restrictions. And then it has to be a one hundred percent vote. Yeah, so for fifty-three years.
Again, this was one of the first in the state. It was messy. That legislation was messy when it was first written. It has been tightened up, but this one got in under. And the Home Depot was a, I don't even know how, I don't even know how the city did it. It was a development agreement that somehow got around the PID rules.
Mayor Proton, you got anything else? Okay. Councilmember Plunkett, do you have anything to add?
No, guess we need to move to approve.
So you do, the option, the option is, sorry, it's open for discussion. Yeah, so I can bring back, so here's the thing, the remaining debt, you know, we could put it to a vote, dissolve, the property owners are gonna say, great, I don't have an assessment anymore, wonderful, yay, do away with it. A hundred percent of them will say, don't assess. But then that debt is spread among fourteen thousand residents.
All right, are we, you have something, Charlie?
No, sir.
Okay, your light's on. I just look around and see. No, no worries. You're new to it, so we gonna help you out. Okay. Councilmember Meyer?
Thank you. So Sylvia, what I'm hearing you say is, we can't table this because we have to get this to the tax assessor collector, right?
You have to get it to the tax assessor collector. It is no change from last year, and I would, what I would say is, at your next meeting, we will have PID council here...
Great.
...in executive session to talk about the legal aspects of the PID HOA, and then also any potential dissolution or amendments.
Thanks.
All right, so, council? We have a motion?
We did.
Okay, in a second. Did you catch that? The motion in a second from, okay, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, passes unanimous. Okay, now we're on to, let me flip my paper around. Eight E, consider an act on resolution number R dash two zero two five dash one one nine, approving the closure of Chestnut Street for the Bastrop Homecoming Parade. Councilmember Meyer?
Thank you so much. And the reason I pull this is because council last year budgeted money. We increased the budget to cross Chestnut Street, because that's a state highway, so you have to have special things done, and we did approve that money. Thank you, council, for that. Now we got a homecoming coming up next week, and it's time to get the route going for the homecoming thing, and we had a little crisis where we didn't have the permit to cross Chestnut. Well, we have a superwoman named Chief Stefanik who made this happen ASAP, so fast, that it was so amazing. You saved the day, chief. So I just really wanted to say thank you so much for taking this on. The citizens and the people of this town, parades crossing Chestnut Street, it's going all the way down Main Street. Thank you, Chief Stefanik.
All right, thank you. You want to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, passes unanimous. All right, agenda item eight H, considering an act on a resolution number two zero two five dash one two five, to authorize the city manager to waive a three hundred dollar special permit fee for Bastrop Market Days for the month of August. Councilmember Fossler.
Oh, yes, thank you. I know this is a small thing, but it did trigger some questions. So the agenda item is to waive a three hundred dollar special permit fee for Bastrop Market Days because it was a rainout and they needed to shift it to the next one, which I have no problem with. But I am curious, and I emailed Sylvia earlier today, I'm just curious, like, because we don't usually get these waiver requests, I was curious what we are doing now about them. Do they, is anybody ever requesting a waiver? Like, do they, who approves them? If so, what is the, what's the criteria? So what this alerted to me is that we don't, we don't have a policy in place, and I would love our ordinance to have a relief written into it so that, so that it can be handled at the administrative level, so that we can have a fair and consistent method of handling relief, and then it's just written into the policy. So that's what, I have no problem approving this. I just wanted to, like, it was a trigger to me, like, oh, go check out the ordinance, and our ordinance looks like it needs updating anyway, and this relief needs to be added into it. So that was my only request, if we could, if we could do that, please.
Councilmember Meyer?
So when I was liaison, and now Councilmember Plunkett is, to Main Street, and Michaela, I may put you on the spot just for a second, because I want to remember correctly, this was some, this is someone who, really, we don't have anyone else that runs it, who gets the permits, and it wasn't granted as specificity just for this, it was the policy. What we're looking at tonight is because this permit was, the event was rained out. Am I right on that?
Yes.
So that's why we're considering, this isn't something that we do all the time, this is, there's not a history of this. This is a special thing that, that's why, so I just wanted everybody to understand, that is why. And just back me up and make, if I'm saying it right.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. This one was specifically because it did rain out that evening, but it did raise some concerns, and we did do some research, and there have been about four in the last six months that we can track back. Most of them were nonprofits, and that direction has come from Sylvia, has kind of been the direction on that. This one was handled a little bit differently because it was requested from the actual event itself. Most of the other ones has been kind of the top-down in the opposite direction. So it's just been, this has been kind of the first one the opposite way. But it did raise some things because we don't currently have anything in our ordinance specifying fees or anything like that. So I do think taking the direction from Fossler and making sure we have something and figuring out the best way for that in the event that we have these come up, we can definitely...
Great, thank you, thank you so much.
Michaela, will you give me a list of what those are after? After, because I don't recall. I told Councilmember Fossler I don't recall. The other thing that makes it, again, special, is this is not a nonprofit, this is a for-profit, and we've had questions at the Main Street Board about how does this continue? How does one person have a monopoly on a special event? So I hear you, we do need administrative relief, but I think the board will be looking at how to best manage this going forward.
Yeah. I was gonna add on that, too. I know I chatted with you guys a while back when we talked about percent for the arts, but we do have some really fun ideas in the funnel right now between Main Street and cultural arts to kind of push a really pedestrian-friendly downtown for a certain weekend, and kind of reimagining First Friday a little bit and Saturday Market Days. So between Main Street and cultural arts, and of course with some new staff I have on board, and some awesome board members and volunteers, we really do intend to take this weekend, this combined effort, and working with Desiree, who's been part of the Market Days, and then Maria, and those that have been involved in First Friday, and stand that up, but really make it a Main Street initiative. So we will oversee this permit moving forward. We just got to figure out all those logistics. And for now, since Desiree's been a rock star keeping it going, we're just, we're rocking with it. But we do have plans for that exact reason.
Thank you. Councilmember Fossler, you have something else?
Thanks, yeah, just the only criteria, since we just reviewed the Parks and Recreation, we just reviewed that policy and those fees, and they had separate categories for nonprofit and for-profit, so I don't have any other specific direction, but that would be something to look at, since you guys have used that criteria in the past. Thank you.
Do you approve?
All right, you have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second, pick.
Motion and a second. Did you catch the second? Councilmember Plunkett. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, it passes unanimous. Thank you, council members. All right, now we're on to item, agenda item nine, items for individual consideration. Nine A, we're gonna conduct a public hearing to consider an act to approve the request for a variance to Bastrop Code of Ordinances, Article four point zero two point zero zero five, sale of alcoholic beverages, separation requirements from church, public, or private school, or public hospital on property located on one thousand sixth Main Street within the city limits of Bastrop. Open the public hearing.
Mayor, council, we're gonna talk about a variance request that we received for the sale of alcoholic beverages downtown. There's a separation requirement in our ordinance, it's three hundred foot separation from any church, public or private school, or public hospital. This variance has been requested by numero twenty-eight Bastrop LLC, which will be located at one thousand sixth Main Street. It's the... It's the, previously the Bearded Baker Building. And the Cavalry Church downtown is measured less than the 300-foot separation. And so this is the, the blue circle there is the 300-foot rule, and you'll see that the church, which is, I'm not sure if they're still doing the private school there or not, but the private school, which will be moving out shortly, but the, the church for sure at this location. So per the ordinance, the council may provide variances, which we've done in the past for, for different businesses there along. There's some that are currently in place, like Anita's and some of the others that are in place that have variances. But the variance requires or can suggest written consent. So we, the church wrote on behalf of the applicant, which is in your packet, giving consent and saying that it's okay for this to, to occur. And so as part of that, we're going to hold the public hearing and then request that you, or recommend that you approve their variance. Any questions?
Do we have any citizen comments on that that showed up? No? Okay. So I'm going to close the public hearing. All right. Council, do we have anything? Mayor Protem Kirkman?
Yeah, just point out that the pastor at that church wrote a letter of support for this project, so they're not at all opposed to it.
Nope, not opposed. In support.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Did you catch who it was? Michael. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. All right. Item 9B, consider an act-
We did have the owners here if you wanted to wave for a minute.
Would y'all like to introduce yourselves? Come, yeah, come on up here. The city might want to know who you are, too. They won't be able to know if you're in the audience, so we got to.
I'm fully represented today.
Okay. All right. So yes, if you can please introduce yourself.
It's a pleasure to meet you all. I don't have all your names memorized yet, but my name is Marco, and I'm one of the partners at Numero 28 Pizzeria. Our first store was opened in Austin in 2014, and we've had the fortune to expand with other great partners into the Houston area, Dallas area. And since I'm a citizen here in Bastrop, I've been here living for more than three years, I thought it would be a good idea to maybe do something around here with the economic development that is coming forth, and the demand for some, you know, greater eateries that we already have, but, you know, something different and spicy and flavorful, you know, we thought we could do it over here. So we're proud and happy to be here, and we thank you for letting us operate, and, and for the variance, you know? And, yeah.
I understand it's going to be a brick oven pizza? Is that what you're doing?
It's, it's, no, it's not a brick oven pizza. It is a New York-style pizza.
Okay.
But we, we do pizzas, fresh pastas, everything is made in-house. It's, I call it like the, our menu reflects like an Italian diner menu. From, from the President of Italy to the usher, we all eat the same food on a daily basis.
Okay.
So that's pretty much what it is. It's just good old home cooking, done right. We're not, we're not chef-driven, we are recipe-driven from the north through the south. Lot of culture, a lot of specialty items, and, and we're all Italians, so, you know.
Okay.
We're the real deal.
All right.
And this is my partner, Marco.
Marco and Marco.
Well, there's other men, there, the other, the other members are not here, and they're all Ms., too. There's another, there's Michael, there's Mark, there's one partner, his name is Bernardo, but we call him Maschio, which is a nickname for him, which means the big guy. So that's another M, so, you know.
Right.
So we're the M Club.
All right.
Well, thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Nice to meet you.
Likewise.
Best of luck to you. Hey, hey, how long till you open?
Say again?
How long till you open?
Aha. The million-dollar question. Well, now that we've cleared everything, and we can move on ahead, realistically, probably by the end of August, like a soft opening with a reduced menu, just to get the doors open and started, and getting the team to, to work together and build together, because we can't just, I don't want to open a restaurant with my full-on menu that I have in Austin and just stumble, you know? So it's going to be a soft opening, get it going, and give it us a month or two after that to, to go on full and on all 12 cylinders, like a Ferrari.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure.
Welcome to downtown.
All right. Now on to agenda item 9B, consider an act on the first reading of ordinance number 2025-61 to approve a map depicting the municipal boundary, city limits, and the extraterritorial jurisdiction ETJ as required by state law, and move to include on August 12, 2025 consent agenda for a second reading. Mr. Robert, how are you, sir?
Good. How are you?
Good.
Good evening, mayor and city council. Glad to be here. So I'm asking for the consideration to approve and adopt the updated city limits and ETJ map as required by law. This refers to the ordinance 2025-49, the annexation of 23.29 acres, Valverde, Section 2, Phase 4. And I have the, I brought my prop, because I'm the map guy, and I'm a prop guy, so.
The official map, my law, with the hand, with the secretary's office, and also we posted on the city's website.
Okay. I'm, I'm just wondering if it'd be good to just have it in other parts around town for people to see?
There we go. We can most certainly make that happen, if, you know, we can-
Yeah. I know citizens are always wondering where exactly they fit in, in the city.
Where the boundaries are, yes, sir.
And so-
Like the visitor center, the library.
Library, yes.
Areas like that, I think it would be great.
Okay.
Yeah.
We can make a note of that, and we can definitely look at that. Do y'all have any more questions?
We have anything?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. It passes unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. 9C, consider an act on a resolution number, resolution number R-2025-114 authorizing the city manager to approve change order number three to the construction contract with Joe Blan Construction LLC for the construction of Agnes Street Extension. Hello, Elizabeth?
Good evening, mayor and council members. The item we have before you today is a resolution authorizing change order number three for Agnes Street Extension. It includes the construction of Black Tail Drive Extension, which will provide a second connection between the Bastrop Grove subdivision and Agnes Street. This also ties back to the resolution that we passed back in April 2025-81, which authorized the design and construction of services for this extension. And then change order number three also includes mill and overlay at the 304 intersection. This is just to reduce any confusion and eliminate any safety concerns. So the red is the to be removed, and then the black is the new striping. And so this area in yellow is what they will mill and overlay. And then we have the construction contract, the previous change orders, which were all deductive, and then number three, and then the grand total. Are there any questions?
Mayor Protem?
Where does the three, well, yeah, the additional funds come from?
Sylvia?
I'm sorry?
Where do the-
Where do the additional funds for this change order?
Those should come from, this is new, this should come from street impact fees. I don't have the exact amount right in front of me, but this is not an existing street, so it's not street sales tax.
Agreed. Yeah. No, I was just checking.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
All right. We got anything else?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Thank you. It is now 7:49, and we will take, break into executive session.
Read it.
Oh, sorry. I got to read it. Thank you. All right. In executive session, we will have agenda item A, city council shall convene into a closed executive session pursuant to Texas Local Government Code, Section 551.074, to deliberate the appointment, employment, and evaluation of the city manager.
Mayor, can we include attorney-client consultation under that one as well, please?
Okay. So also with attorney-client consultation.